I'll say good morning to everybody. I'm Steve Bosque, the Sun Sentinels Opinion Editor. Deputy Opinion Editor Dan Sweeney is with us. Reporter Lisa Hurry Ash who covers county government. You know this Commissioner, but I'm going to say it just for edification. The reporters in the newsroom contribute with lots of perspective and good questions, but they play no role whatsoever in editorial endorsements, none.
Right.
So, thank you so much Commissioner Beam Fur is with us. He's running for reelection in a reconfigured District Six.
Yep.
And Commissioner, you know, you've got your ear to the ground on lots of things. Tell us right off the bat, tell us how geographically or demographically, tell us how District Six changed in reapportionment.
It changed, it changed a lot because it suddenly became what was, it had like a long arm out to Pembroke Pines. But, and now it is like strictly a southeast Broward. Oh, it's almost like an old south Broward district. Because nothing goes further west than 441. Which was when I, when I first moved here, nothing went first, further west than 441. So it feels like old home week, having grown up here a long time.
Sure.
And, and, and the areas that I lived in and all my friends lived in, now I'm representing those areas, which I like old, what was west unincorporated is now West Park, Pembroke Park, Dania, south part of Fort Lauderdale. So, I, I've, I've always had an affinity for that area, so I really like it.
Is Seminole Hard Rock in your district?
It is, no, it is not.
How about the port? How about Port Everglades?
Port is, the airport is, the incinerator is, a number of different things are, yes.
Okay. Well, tell us what you hope to accomplish in a next term that you haven't been able to accomplish so far.
Okay. Well, I feel like in the last eight years, we've been laying the groundwork for a lot of things. Particularly one with solid waste, this has been taking forever. But all the cities are working together and we are at like a week or two away from signing an interlocal agreement with all the cities that would finally put together a solid waste, a comprehensive solid waste district. That, it's still going to be a couple of years in writing a master plan and those kind of things. But the groundwork's been laid and I, and I'm feeling pretty confident about that. The other one that I think is, is that we have some really good groundwork laid is on the transportation. With the penny for transportation tax, we were, we've been able to add bus routes and add, add more time, more routes as well as more frequent, more frequent. But what I'm really excited about is I think we're going to be able to do the commuter link, commuter coastal link with Miami Dade. You may have, you, you may have noticed, I don't think I saw anything in the paper about it, but the commission had a workshop through consensus, decided to work together with Miami Dade to go, to go in together to try to apply for the mega grants on the infrastructure level. Which would, then you'd have like a commuter rail all the way from south of Miami all the way up to, up to the river. Not under or over, we haven't figured that part out yet. But up to the river and, you know, I think once we get that, we'll, there'll be enough pressure to kind of get us over or under one of the, one, either one, one way or the other. But that's exciting because, for a couple of reasons. Not only does it give, it creates a spine for the transportation network. Now we'll start to know where, where we can put the arterials, the connections, the light rail going east-west. But you gotta have a spine first, this creates that spine. So I'm, I'm excited about that.
Okay. Let's back up just a half a second. The, the, the interlocal agreement on the solid waste district.
Yeah.
Is this, is this a district with taxing authority?
It will be, yes. It will be a solid waste, special district, solid waste, solid waste authority that we, that, yes, it would be allowing for taxing.
Does it require any intervention by either voters or by the Florida legislature?
A, no, it does not. It will, it will, it will require every city commission to vote to be a part of it. And then, and then it has a, it has, we have the ability to do that, to do the taxing through there.
Okay. Are there any, are there any substantial sized cities in Broward that don't want anything to do with this thing?
Right now, we have a hundred percent with the exception of Lazy Lake.
Okay.
All 22 people there, I don't know, we can't, we can't seem to get hold of them.
Okay.
But this, this has a couple, I know, this has a couple of steps. The interlocal agreement, first we had everybody sign on to the MOU to not sell the Alpha 250, everybody went with that. And then everybody had to sign on to the Waste Generation Study. Everybody signed on for that and paid for it. Now, I think everybody will probably sign on for the interlocal agreement. There is one, one exit ramp that they will have. If they finally decide they don't want to go through this. And that will be after the, at the master plan. Because that will be determining, that's going to be saying, here's what we're going to be doing, you know, the whole big plan and here's what it's going to cost. So there's still an exit ramp for people to get off, but no one's gotten off yet.
Before we get too far afield, I do want to ask you as, as one Commissioner, where do you stand on building a tunnel or a bridge across the new river for bright line and for boat traffic?
Um, I just want to get over, I just want to get over it. I really don't, I don't really care which way. I just want to make sure we get over it because it's too important not to. If it could be shown that, you know, we could do it and still have money left over to, to do the rest of our plan, I'm all for it. If we're able to get, there's a lot of grant money out there. Mega grant money, Chrissy Grant, because this is also a regional effort. Between, I'm on SEFTAC if you didn't know. I'm the Broward representative. And Broward, Miami Dade and Palm Beach have all said, we want to do this because it connects 41 downtowns together. So, because it's regional in, in nature, there is more money available to this. So, you know, I am, I honestly will go either way. Whatever works, I'm, I'm ready to do it.
And just a quick follow, follow up to that. You're well aware, I'm sure that, and I hope I'm characterizing this correctly, the city of Fort Lauderdale is insistent on a tunnel.
They are, they are.
Okay.
Um, and I understand, but the, you know, the, and I'm trying to work with, with that commission. The reality is that there's, and I, and I understand that they want to try to, Broward Boulevard is an important, and they want to be able to go under that. But there's 55, I think there's 55 other crossings. And so they're all important, you know, and they all have a lot of, you know, and we only have so much money. So we have to, we have to be smart about this. And if we can do it using a little bit of Fed money and it's not, it doesn't hamper all of our other efforts, okay. But we, but we have to take, we have to also look big picture. And I, and I, I think Fort Lauderdale wants to do the same thing. So we're all trying to build up an entire network here.
Okay. There's a million other topics and I've got lots of other questions, but I don't want to monopolize the, I want to open the floor to Dan Sweeney and to Lisa Hurry Ash for questions.
Okay.
Either one of you, go ahead.
Good morning, Dan.
Hey Commissioner, how you doing?
I'm doing great, how you doing?
You, on your questionnaire, I said, there were a couple of questions regarding lobbying and not only to the commission, but on behalf of the commission to Tallahassee. Can you get a little more into that? I believe the question was that, is it a good use of taxpayer funds to send, you know, a score of lobbyists up to, up to Tallahassee? Do you think that that's a good, and you essentially said yes, given the state, the climate we're in right now. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Well, if I was gonna, if it, if the climate wasn't what it was, I would, I would agree with you. I would say it's excessive. Because we do have, it seems like we have every firm in the book, you know, working for us. And I don't know if we need that many. But given, given the onslaught of legislation that we've been facing with being preempted left and right on different things, it's just been, it's like putting your finger in the dikes in all, in all kinds of different ways. And frankly, we've needed help. And they've kind of come to our help lately. If it was a regular, you know, session, yeah, probably too many, is my, is my feeling.
On, on the, on the point of people lobbying the commission, you made the point that, you know, well, to, to, for lack of a better, a better term, that, that, you know, if it's a, if it's a garbage message, it doesn't matter how high priced the lobbyist is, it's still a garbage message. You know, and, and that a, a single person who's, who's got a great message and is just trying to, to, as a constituent, reach out to their elected official can, can actually move the dial and change things. If that's the case in the county, then why so many high-end lawyers for Tallahassee?
Um, well, I mean, if you're really thinking, I mean, you, one hopes that our own legislators will be doing our lobbying for us. That's the hope. But I kind of see within 60 days, they're kind of, you know, there's so many bills out there, it's almost like there's more than they can handle within 60 days. So it's kind of like you're in, you're in a small frame and you've got, and for, for, for better or for worse, what lobbyists do is somewhat try to educate a legislator. They tell you, here's what's in it, dah 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 dah. They won't always tell you all of it. That's the thing you have to be careful of. They'll tell you what you, you know, they think you want to hear. But, you know, I, I, I think in, in the last, this last year, it has been helpful. We've been, we've needed lobbyists going to, on the Fed level, on the Tallahassee, on the state level, especially on the CNS issues, the big, the big water project issues, those kinds of things. We've needed all hands on deck for that. Because it's so important that we've had to hit it from like nine different angles. So I think, I think you're seeing fairly good use of it in general, but sometimes it seems like too many. I know what you mean, I know why you, I understand why you're looking at this.
I've got a related question about this, and that is that some of these firms are, at least in my experience, more, much more closely aligned with Democrats than Republicans. You're going to have to explain to me why in a Republican-dominated legislature, it's a good idea to hire lobbyists who are tied to Democrats?
Um, well, I think it's, the reverse is what is, the, is also in play. You make sure that you've got Republican-leaning lobbyists, you need both, you need both. Because, most of the lobbyists know that they have to work both sides of the aisle. You're not going to get anywhere if you're only working one side. So, at least the lobbyists that I see, simply try to go in down the middle as much as they can and explain what it is. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, you know, so much that they're a Democratic firm, but I, I, I do think we have on purpose, tried to make sure we have some Republican-leaning firms there to do exactly what you're saying, to make sure that we're, we're getting in the door.
And are these, are these firms generally, take us behind, behind the curtain a little bit. Are these firms chosen by the commissioners or by staff?
Um, I think it's a little bit of both. And, and because I'm not, this is not really my world as much. I'm in the education world, so I don't, I don't have as good of a background on this as, other than the lobbyists that I meet. So there's a lot of firms there that I don't know, I, you know, I don't know them. So the commission hasn't really, suddenly they, they pop up and someone's saying, here's why you need them, they're good on this issue. Okay, yes, we need help on that issue. All right, I can, I can, you know, thank you for the, you know, letting me know that. So our staff is, that's, that's their job to kind of be in tune with that. Our intergovernmental staff.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, those, we know those people well. Lisa Hurry Ash, I'll open the floor to you if you have questions. If not, we'll just keep moving.
Sure, I do have questions actually. Two issues Bean, if you can please address. The first one has to do with the flooding concern. I know Steve Geller has talked a lot about this at the commission. You have a whole staff person dedicated to not making sure that we're not all swimming, flooding in the canal. I haven't, this came up in passing, but then it had, doesn't seem to have been like a constant issue with the urgency that your staff is talking about. It doesn't seem to be urgent on the commission. Can you talk about the flooding issue and what are we going to see to try to fix this issue?
I think the, I think you're probably, when Steve's talking and when I'm talking, we're talking about the CNS study, which is the review of the 1947 Army Corps of Engineers study out in the Everglades. The fact of the matter is with sea level rise, those gates, which are gravity-fed, are slowly almost, they're almost about to be overrun. We've got about a six to nine inch gap right now, which is nothing. And in, and in 10 years, that would disappear. So we've been trying to sound the alarm, we need to do this now. Our congressional legislation has been, has been successful this year in finally getting this into the Word of Bill, which is the Water Resources Development Act for funding. We finally got it in this year, thanks to W. Wasserman Schultz, Ted Deutsch, and Robert, Robin Bartleman helped on the state side and got, got $2 million to be part of a study. So I think we're on our way. We're also in the middle of that, the county's doing a vulnerability assessment to note, to see where our, you know, where our, our highest priorities have to be looked at. On, on roads, wastewater, infrastructure, all infrastructure. So we're looking at all that. The urgency's there and I think we're trying to meet, meet that. I hope I answered that.
So they have vulnerability assessment study that's being done now?
Doing right now by Hazen and Assari. We just hired them a couple of months ago. It's, it's a multi-year project that we're looking at, be looking at all of the prioritization of vulnerability. So we know exactly where to, you know, how to address climate change and sea level rise systematically and with priorities.
What, you said it'll take them multi, multiple years?
Yes. It's, well, we'll have a lot by the end of next year. But I think they're using, it might be two-year study.
Okay, and the next issue please, can you address 911? And the dispatch system? And what, how the county's going to follow through on this issue?
Sure. And you've probably had a chance to look at the Fitch Report that came out in, I want to say 2015. And that gave a fairly good blueprint for how to, how, how to run the center. And we were doing that for a while and it was, and the call times were, as, as I mentioned in your questionnaire, the call times were like less than two seconds. And so I think a lot of us were thinking, well, everything's okay. Until we saw recently that no, things were not okay. That call times had, had really gone by the wayside and, and really got, we got behind on it. We looked at what, how much we were paying our, our people and it wasn't on par with Miami Beach, Miami Dade or Palm Beach. So we quickly rectified that now, and we are, have gotten a, a ton of applicants now since we did that. Because a lot of it seemed to be because we were short-staffed. We're going to find out if that's the issue or not. You know, we've got, we've got to give it a little time to find out if that's the issue. If that's not the issue, then we're going to, then it's another ballgame. Then we're going to have to look at what's, what, how it's being run and if we have to have somebody else run it.
The sheriff had asked to take it over. What, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm not, I, I'm not in favor of that.
Why?
Um, I think there needs to be checks and balances. I think if you, I think if you put the purse strings in, you know, if you put them, if law enforcement has control of the purse strings, every toy and every, everything possible gets bought. And there needs to be a check and balance. I think it works better that way. So, you know, I, I think we, you know, we, we work better when we convince each other and persuade each other for what's needed. And so that, I'm going to, I, I think it needs to stay in the hands of professional staff. Independent, independent of the sheriff's office.
Bean, the property tax, the two property tax hearings on the county budget, I think are probably going to be in September, they always are.
Right.
Is, is the county raising the tax rate?
No.
And tell us how that all came together, basically.
To be honest, the, the reality is the property values have been high enough to handle all of the cost of living expenses that have come with union contracts, with general needs. So there's not a need to change the mileage rate. The actual, the actual budget, I don't want, I want to be fully transparent. Our budget will be higher, but it's, but because of property values, that it's, they're kind of falling in line with that. So our budget's bigger, but we haven't, we don't have to raise the mileage rate to do that.
What more should Broward County, Broward County government be doing to address the housing affordability crisis in the community?
I think one of the best things we can do is to start to marry the transportation corridors that we're looking at and start to really incentivize the transit-oriented development up and down on the arterials. There's, and provide incentive, provide bonuses for extra density. Why do I say that? Because we know that 50% of the people in this county are cost burdened by housing. But that number goes up even higher to 67% when you add transportation to it. So if you can kind of get, add a lot more housing along the transportation corridors where we're providing good mass transit, you, you make affordable housing a little bit more affordable because people then won't need a car. So you have to, you know, it's kind of working two issues at the same time.
Okay. And by the way, you know, take us around the county. Pines Boulevard, Pines Boulevard, Sunrise Boulevard, Oakland Park Boulevard. Is tra, in your opinion, is traffic getting worse or is it getting better in Broward?
Um, I don't think it's improved yet. But I do think what is in, on the horizon has the, has the promise to do that. And I say that because what's needed, what we're laying right now is fiber optic throughout this entire county. It's one of the main benefits of the penny for transportation investment. What that, what that is going to do is it changes the way that lights and things can be synchronized. Right now it's reactive as, as opposed to being proactive. With a new, with the fiber optic system, it allows us to put together an entire broader, a system that allows us to be a little bit more proactive. Know, you know, being able to look at cameras, look at, you know, what the traffic is different times of day, change, change the lighting on the, on the fly and be able to do that. You're, so you're seeing on, on almost every arterial in this county that, you know, you've, if you go out there, you see, you're seeing that fiber optic being laid down. Once that's done, I think that, that's our, one of our best promises for doing that. Till then, you have seen, you have seen mass transit. You know, the, the currency and the, the, the amount of buses, that is, that's gotten a lot better. You have seen it got better, you get better across counties. You're seeing a big demand for, for the buses to go, to go in the express lanes. We, you know, we, we keep adding more buses to that. So there are people that are using those more and more often. So those kinds of things are good. But to, you know, I think we're laying the groundwork for trying to alleviate congestion and provide for better mobility.
Commissioner, you, you mentioned, you know, increased mass transit and you also, before that though, mentioned, you know, incentivizing density. Does mass transit, does mass transit and encouraging people not to have their own cars, is that going to keep up with the density? And if not, is traffic actually going to get worse before it gets better?
Well, when I said incentivize density, because I'm saying it along the corridors where you can put, where there is the best opportunity for mass transit. That's, that's what I'm talking about. So somebody doesn't need, doesn't need a car. So you can provide, you can, you know, you can allow for density and it wouldn't affect hopefully more cars.
Hopefully doing a lot of work there?
What's that?
I said, is hopefully doing a lot of work in that last sentence you said?
Have you, have you been in any public forum, a public meeting place with voters where you've run into your, your primary opponent Jeffrey Jones?
No.
You ever met him?
I did meet him one time. I met him at a meeting about a week or two ago. But it was, it was a small meeting, yes, I met him.
Okay. All right.
Nice to meet you.
Well, I want to bring up an issue that's a hearty perennial. Certainly it's an important issue to the Sunset and the Editorial Board and that's whether Broward should give voters the opportunity to restructure government and create an elected countywide mayor. This was debated, Tim Ryan's proposal was debated at length at a meeting in June. The six votes weren't there.
Right.
Refresh, refresh our recollection, what is your position on this issue?
Okay, and it, and it has evolved actually. Because last year I voted against it. Or two years ago, I think I voted against it. And then I've had a chance, you know, I've had a chance to see a few different things and I mentioned this in your questionnaire. I saw while, while I was mayor, what could be done in, in kind of driving policy. The Penny for Transportation Act, some interlocal agreements. It was kind of easier as a mayor to get some of those things done. I also saw, I think you probably remember when, when the ship was out in the ocean. That was, that people COVID on it and they, and across, on our commission, it was across the spectrum. I, I was pushing to, to bring them in, but there were others that were saying, no way. And, and I saw that having that kind of cross-pollination of ideas, we found ways to bring them in, but do it responsibly. And all of us were in the middle of that. So that kind of policy by committee, it has its, it has its benefits. Because you really do get a lot of eyes on things. So, you know, I, I, it hasn't bothered me at all. But if we want to try to see some policy, I really have a lot of respect for Daniella LaCava and what she's doing in Miami Dade. I think that's a good example of a mayor driving policy and driving it well. And if somebody, and if we could do it in that kind of manner, I think we'd probably be okay. So, long answer to what you're saying. I, I'm willing to put it on the ballot and I've said yes. At, on, at that meeting, I said, I'd be happy to do that. I'll be honest though, I do, I don't hear anybody clamoring for that other than some lobbyists. And I'm not, and I haven't quite figured that out, why they want it so bad. But they do. So, and, and I think your newspaper seems to want to push us for this. And I'm not sure what you're thinking, why you think that's a better idea. But, you know, I, I, I just haven't heard a clamoring from people on this issue, but I'm willing to put it out to the voters.
It's a, we don't have the time or the bandwidth for a very long discussion about it now, but, but you raised a legitimate point and I'll just give you, since, since I, I take responsibility for everything we put on the editorial page, I'll, I'll, I'll try to help you here. And that is that when you turn on your local news on Channel 10 or Channel 4 and there's a crisis or there's an issue of importance in Miami Dade County.
Yeah.
Danielle Levine-Cava is on TV addressing these issues. There's no ambiguity or confusion about who's in charge in Miami Dade of county government. And I think it's very ambiguous in Broward and frankly, it has been for a very long time.
Yeah.
The reality is, the reality is the person who's in charge really, you may disagree with this, the person who's really in charge is the, is the unelected appointed county administrator.
Yeah. And to your, and to your point, I think, having seen what, you know, we've just gone through COVID and I think it would have been better, we, you know, if people knew exactly who was leading our county. To your point, I think it's kind of made, that's part of what's made me evolve from saying no to giving it a possibility, to your point. Because I think we ended up having two or three mayors during, during this crisis. And it gets, it gets confusing. Confusing to people who, who to, who to go to.
You, you and your colleagues hired Monica Shapiro as the county administrator to replace Bertha Henry who retired last year. And you promoted Monica without, without any extensive search regionally or nationally. Why, why was that the right decision?
Um, I, one of the things that having gone through COVID, what, what Bertha and Monica had to do, which was unprecedented, was they were having to work with every different department in this county, every different city, all the different staffs. And they had actually built up a relationships between them that had previously never happened, that I know of. And they had, and it was really, the relationship was, was working pretty, pretty well. All the cities, when we were having to disperse money, ARPA money. So what I, what I saw was, this was one of those few times, I usually like going out for a national search. But the benefits that had happened because of COVID and all of those relationships which seemed to be working well was unprecedented. but the benefits that had happened because of COVID and all of those relationships, which seemed to be working well, was unprecedented. And I said, you know what, this is one of those times where we, we have, um, somebody who knows everybody in town now, knows every department, and has a good working relationship. I didn't want to jeopardize that. I thought, I thought it provided such a good head start that I, that I, uh, went with that.
There was recently, uh, a development where, first of all, I'll back up. There were a lot of, there were a lot of great discussions and frankly, grandiose plans by the county and the city of Fort Lauderdale to jointly build a major governmental center, just, just west of downtown Fort Lauderdale, near what people know as the Greyhound Bus Terminal, right there at Broward Boulevard and DeAndres Avenue. The, the, based on what we're hearing and what we've, we've reported, these plans have collapsed, they've fallen apart. Um, was, was it, was that, would you like to see this plan move forward, or did the county make the right decision here?
Um, you know, I, I think everybody's been backpedaling because of the cost that we saw. It was, it was, you know, upwards of eight hundred million dollars. Um, I still think it, it, it makes sense for us to try to do something. Um, and figure out what, because I think there's economies of scale there that would benefit both the city and the county. Um, does it need to be a P-three? Maybe not, because maybe that's where we can reduce costs. And so I think we have to sharpen our pencils, find out, you know, maybe, um, maybe a little less grandeur. Even though I still think it's important to have one, because a government building like this is something that should be, you know, you look at it for, you don't build it for ten years, you build it for, you know, as long as, you build it for a long, long time.
Right.
Um, so there's supposed to be, um, something that speaks to the people. Uh, and I, you know, right now we're working out of an old Burdines. We can do better than that. Um, and it, but, you know, so, and I think, uh, you know, I've been over to Fort Lauderdale, they've outlived theirs. Um, so it's time for one, and we just need to, we may, and maybe we need to kind of rethink it a little bit. But I haven't, I haven't ta, I haven't taken it off the shelf yet.
Am I correct that with, with the term limits, uh, ordinance or policy, this is the last time you can run for your seat, is that right?
This, this is the last time.
Okay. Um, I want to bring up one more policy issue because we followed it closely and we editorialized on it, and I think it's still, it's unresolved. Bean, it's, it's this issue of, and, and first of all, the predicate here, of course, is, uh, for decades in Broward County, the county, the county is not always seen as the friendliest, nicest, um, neighbor in terms of, the, the county has to cite, you know, unfavorable things like incinerators and sewage plants and a bus terminal, things like that. So which brings us to the question of, of building a new headquarters for the medical examiner and a forensic crime lab for the Broward Sheriff's Office.
Right.
Their, their crap, I think that they do a lot of this work at the courthouse still, maybe. And, and, uh, anyway, make a long story short, um, the, the, the county had purchased land from the school district in the, in the neighborhood known as Golden Heights, which is on the western edge of Fort Lauderdale. Uh, and people, opponents marshaled neighborhood opposition, and, um, Commissioner Holdness got very involved in the issue, and it, and it, and it, it, it collapsed. And as I, the county still owns the land, but there's no site for this, um, medical examiner's office yet.
Um, yeah.
What, what's, what's the takeaway from that episode and that controversy?
There's a couple of them. First of all, you, there has to be a lot of groundwork before you do something like that. Neighborhoods have to be brought in, um, be part of the planning, be, you know, especially something like this. I mean, I can understand why, um, Bertha Henry and the district commissioner at the time thought this would be a good idea. It's a state-of-the-art facility, lots of good jobs, high-paying jobs, going into a community that, um, you know, could use high-paying jobs. But if all they're thinking of, and I think I mentioned this, is this is where everybody's bringing dead people. In their mind, that's, that's all they're thinking. So forget the, the crime lab, forget state-of-the-art forensics and all that. You know, there's, you know, you, you got to get past that first. And that, that requires a lot of discussion. That requires a lot of people, you know, knowing what's really happening there. And you, and you can't just pop that into, onto, you know, without, without a good discussion. So, you know, it, it requires a lot of outreach. We're gonna have to do all kinds of outreach, no matter where we go. If we, if this, if this is not going to go there, we have to learn from that. And wherever, wherever, wherever else we look, because we still need one. We still need a, a medical facility that is, um, you know, up to date. So lesson learned, we're gonna have to go in there and, uh, let people know, here's what it's all about. Here's what you can expect, you know, here's the kind of jobs it is, but here's the reality of it.
Okay. Let me, uh, uh, I'm, I'm mindful of your time and, uh, appreciate your, your accessibility, but I want to ask Lisa and Dan if they have any other questions.
Sure.
I'm glad, thank you.
All right. Okay. Um, well, Commissioner Fur, thanks so much for being with us this morning. I, I do want to say this, let's, let's give you, uh, a minute or a minute and a half. Um, you know, give us your closing argument that you would, that you would make to a homeowners association or a group of residents about why you, you think you, you deserve a third term.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, I, I've been on the county commission for eight years now. It has given me a chance to, uh, really understand how it works, what it can do, what benefits it can do. And it's given me a chance to lay groundwork for what I can, what I think, and I think a lot of other people think, are some very big, uh, projects. Some things just take a long time in, in government. I, I, I was a city commissioner before this. Um, I remember something that I, the, the week I first got elected, it didn't get done for twenty years. That was an affordable housing project. Projects that I'm working on now, particularly things like, like solid waste and, um, uh, transportation and those things, they take a long time. And I, you know, I, I think that my, my experience, uh, my ability to bring people together, because a lot of these require consensus building. Um, and I think I'm, I'm fairly good at it, uh, bringing cities together, bringing people together. And I, you know, I'm, I'm on the clock now, I've got four years, and I'm going to be working every minute of every day to get it done. Uh, I want, I want to make sure those things are done before I finish. And so to the voters, I asked, you know, I asked for their support, and I, you know, I think, uh, they know that I, I work hard, and I give them, I give them the best I've got every single day. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, we, we appreciate you coming on with us this morning. Best of luck to you, thanks Bean.
Thanks Steve, thank you Dan, thank you Lisa.